Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
First thing. Okay, and please. How are we? Okay.
They were involved.
They're on. They have. Oh, my God. Basically.
So how much? Sure. You know, wait.
Point two, the flag. Is. Oh. Yes. If. All with lyrics in justice.
First time in business to be public comment. It's some time for people to make a comment to the county commission. And. Not at all. Not a question and answers. That's just time for for citizens to tell us. Uh, make comments to us. So what I'll do is they usually call for comments in the audience. Call for comments. And if there are comments or there aren't. Is there anybody in the room that would like to comment? Is there anybody on? Um, raise your hand. You guys see him?
No.
That will move on. Consideration of adoption of agendas will be emotions.
Any changes? No changes. For adoption of the agendas presented.
I thought I could.
Second, then follow any further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we'll move on to other part. Or, you know, first up is his house and solutions. What do we think?
Morning.
Good morning.
Did I see it at county college?
Yeah.
You're in the picture with the Gina posted?
Not sure which picture she was.
We're all wearing safety vests.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, well, was it? Yeah, maybe it was AOC. Anyways, how was it?
It was, uh, enjoyable. Commissioner Peterson and Valerie and Rob Harvard, very enjoy. Uh, glad it's done, but good session.
So, um, that that'll be my segue into behavioral health. There's behavioral health section typically, right? That occurs in county college. And was it informative and informative? And I recently met with you. Did I lie about anything?
I think you could have included more about how, uh, large a burden it is.
Yeah, I didn't sleep last night, actually, you know, through some things, so it is.
Yeah.
Large. Well, and and you as commissioners do have a lot to think about. Hopefully, I hope this doesn't sound, I'll just say, I think if you have a good CMHP that's doing a good job and keeping you apprised, which is what we're going to talk about today, some significant issues, then the burden is less. I hope.
Well, it's Maggie Weston.
Well, yeah. Okay, so I've been working a little bit with Matt. We didn't talk yesterday, did you? Okay, good. But did you reply? Were we supposed to talk yesterday? And I didn't look at him. I was behind on emails yesterday. That's when you.
I don't think we were planning to talk yesterday, but we do still need to talk.
Okay. Well, you'd asked about if I had time to talk on Monday. And I think I replied and said yes, but I don't know that you replied. Okay, let's let's move on. There has been, there there have been and will continue to be a significant issue um, around the the contract with the county. So I'm gonna do my best to tee it up. I think it's really important that as commissioners, you're tracking this or you're working closely with Matt, who's tracking him? Um. As you know, there's a contract between the state and the counties. That's true for every community mental health program, except for a few who have given it up. We're not going to talk about that because I don't want you to give up your local mental health authority. Please, you can, but please don't. So there's, we call it the map loosely. We call it the master contract. In some circles, it's called the intergovernmental agreement or IGA. In other circles, it's called the CFA, the County Financial Assistance Award. Um, so that contract exists and then you either take that contract and you provide the services yourself and the employees work for the county, or you contract with, um, another, a nonprofit. That's what Moro County chose to do back in two thousand and seven. And and here we are. So then you and I have a contractor, you and CCS have a contract. Uh, that contract hasn't changed for a long time. And there's been some small revisions here and there, but it hasn't changed since two hundred and fifty pages roughly. Sound great? It's a, it's, it's a monster. Um, and last year, the counties, which, uh, the counties via AOC requested the, um, state OHA to revisit the contract and make some modifications. Everybody agreed that it needed to be looked at and short. So there was a work group, uh, that consisted of county commissioners, some community mental health program directors and county councils. I'm not sure if Justin was on that, but they were meeting regularly with OHA to work on this. And over the last year, the contract has had a lot of iterations and things were moving along well until about a month ago. And tell me, Justin, and now if I'm if I'm wrong here about any of this. About a month ago, the state came back with the draft and six words were missing. Um, and that was, uh, oh, gosh, I'm not gonna get it the exact six words, but, um, based upon the availability of funds. So it said, uh, in historically, the county will provide all of these services based upon the availability of funds. And the, in the draft that showed up a month ago, based upon the availability of funds was gone. And so county said, wait, where'd it go? That's important. And the state said, um, we know it's important. We wouldn't ask you to pro- provide those services. County said, great, put put the words back. And the state said, no, we're not going to. There was a meeting with the governor. The governor walked out, refused to put the words back in. And then it was maybe the third week in June. And there was nothing. There was no contract. Everybody was trying to figure out what are we going to do? Um, how does this work? Um, I'm gonna skip some of those conversations. The end result is that, uh, the state is now going to extend the contract with the counties as is, with the current language for six months. Um, which means that then these conversations are going to continue to occur and there could be another stalemate. I don't know, but I think the issue is significant. If I were the county, I'd be paying close attention to that. Um, and I'm gonna just pause there to see if there's any questions. I have some additional thoughts. Matt and Justin might as well, or any of you that were following it.
AOC has been, I think, doing a good job of keeping us surprised at the situation and, uh, we're almost as, uh, email heavy as the state. The state would send us a contract to sign and AOC would say, don't sign it. Um, I think it didn't look like that for pretty consistently for a while. Um, and we dressed AOC absolutely those, uh, un- unfunded mandates. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So.
Now, if if they were to give us some funded mandates, many counties do serve.
But we have the contracts with with each of the counties and your funds are all separate. So which leap takes me to a different, well, I will get into a different conversation about that here in a few minutes. Yeah.
Well, what if we went through a scenario where, okay, state, the language. But you you pretty much know, and you were to come to the county and say, okay, now, so. I mean, you provide a lot of administrative services for all five together, but you haven't developed.
Yeah, if I use myself, for example, we, um, look at how much time I spend in each county and then that county pays for my time. And there's different ways of doing that, but time studies are are common. Um, and we do that for every administrative person. So the HR person, the finance person, billing people, they all get broken up by county and then separate funds. That way, we know that the counties that come to Moro County are being spent on Moro County services only. Okay, um. There's some federal things to consider here and, um, we don't have answers here. I just want to mention them briefly. Uh, there's no political statements intended in here, right? Just just statements that if Medicaid does receive cuts, it would depend upon where the cuts are. So not here with some doom and gloom statement. And there's a lot of, no, I haven't read the, um, what's the title of the bill? A beautiful a beautiful bill or something like that. I don't know. I haven't read it. So a big, beautiful bill. Thank you. Uh. If, uh, but what what I hear from ASC or AHP or even NACBIT at the national level is that it it would be, um, it would be significant. So in Oregon, Medicaid funds sixty percent of the services for that go to the, the funds that go to the CCL and Oregon matches at the at the forty percent level. So for the Medicaid dollars, which makes about two thirds of our total funding um, in Moro County, if the Medicaid dollars did disappear and we lost sixty percent, then we would. If that happened, we would be looking, we'd have some significant changes that we needed to make. I don't know what's gonna happen, but I just would feel remiss if I didn't mention it. Um, so that if we did need to need to have this conversation, uh, wouldn't be a surprise. Um, part of, so I want to go back now to the to the updated contract. One of the things that was agreed to, which was surprising to me, was to cut some of the funds from that master contract that the state, um, and I guess the counties didn't feel were core services. I'm gonna use one, um, one as an example, and that is school-based mental health services. In the contract, it's referred to as service element thirteen. There's also gambling on dollars that are part of this and and a few others. So currently, your contract has gambling dollars and and school-based counseling dollars. And it was, well, not yet currently as a yes, as of the thirtieth, not as of today. So it was agreed to pull those funds out because they're not considered safety net services. And, uh, the state sent contracts to the, um, entities that the county contracts with if the county didn't provide the services themselves. So in this case, that went to CCS. And we received two contracts. Well, we we received a few more, but two for, um, MHS thirteen, which is school-based counseling, and, uh, eighty alcohol and drug eighty and eighty-one. Both of those are gambling. I can share with you the reasons why I don't think that that was good. Um, I I don't know that Moro County was involved in it and nobody asked, you know, my opinion, so it's not a criticism of Moro County. But, um, I think that you, I think that you lose some control as a county over the providers. Because if CCS, for whatever reason, was no longer here, you could have anybody that the that the state chose to contract provide those services, and it's not your decision. The other thing that I think that is impactful is that uh, you need a certain amount of business to make the business work. Like, if you have fifteen coffee shops in Hupner, people are, it's not gonna work, right? So you have to have this core amount of business. I'm not saying that CCS should be the one that gets the money, but it could get watered down and then you don't have anybody. Um, so you could have a provider that you don't like for some of these services, or you could have a system that doesn't work um, because it's not large enough to support it. Setting that aside, we received one contract for all five counties for gambling, if I use that as an example. Gambling has base dollars in it, so each county, um, regardless of size, is gonna get at least eighty thousand. And then as as you get larger in sizes, then you might have a hundred or a hundred and twenty thousand. And the problem with that is that if they start to look at CCS, Moro, Wheeler, Gillum, and Grant as one county, everybody's gonna lose money. Whereas right now, Moro gets eighty, Wheeler gets, um, actually Wheeler gets a little less, sixty, Gillum gets sixty, so on and so forth. So you get to this amount that's around three hundred thousand dollars. You get those funds in your county and they're spent in their county, but if they took them all, which they will do, they would do because they've done it before and said, okay, well, your size of a county for all of your numbers is a hundred and twenty thousand. You're gonna go from eighty thousand to something maybe like twenty or thirty thousand. And it would be very impactful for those services. I, um, just shy of invoked you last week when having these conversations and said, I just can't imagine my commissioners going for this. Now, I understand that this was approved by the counties, but I just don't think that Moro County for Yumitola or Wheeler and Gillum, I don't know. You know, I just, I can't imagine this. So they did agree to do five different contracts with CCS for these service elements, but they didn't really like it. And so I wanted to put that on on your radar that if you agree with me, I might need your help in, um, addressing this. To me, the simple answer is put this back in the county contracts. Let's stop trying to shave this to nothing. I think if I'm cynical, the state's trying to just cut the counties out, then eventually you're not gonna have any, say, ten years from now. And they'll just keep peeling these service elements off and it'll get to what they want, which I think is for the state to contract with whoever they want to and remove you as the local mental health authority. That's my, uh, draconian feel about this. Um, so that would be my vote is let this, let's put these back in the county contracts. But if that's not gonna happen, um, I think that they should not be. If there's entities where multiple counties are involved, let's not have the county be impacted by that and go to one contract. Does that make sense?
So it sounds like they're punishing us.
Exactly what I said.
It's either punishing us because we've all contracted this one provider instead of.
Right.
Us having a separate end of the method writer.
Right.
Not in favor.
Then and at the end of the day, and this is my bias, you get more service because you're not paying for all of me. You're not paying for all of HR, but you get, I think, this great service with these additional benefits from from this combined approach, but it disincentivizes efficiency and you lose money. And yes, I think that's wrong.
For for us, I think we could probably stomach it, but it would absolutely be massively destructive for Gillum and Wheeler.
Well, it would be, and you could stomach it, but what are you gonna get for gambling services on twenty thousand a year? I mean, well, you're not gonna have, you're not gonna have a program. Really? So, um, this isn't as much of an issue, right, for some other county? I don't know that really the larger counties really thought about it when you start to peel these off. Um, I would say AOC, MHP, all of the community mental health program directors disagree with this decision. But it was, it was an agreement or consensus that was reached at the county county council level in those conversations with, um, OHA. So two cents.
So what can we do to help you in this issue?
Well, right now, I'm just appraising you, uh, and if you hear about it or if you want to start to participate in those meetings, reach out to Gina. And, uh, I would love it if you got involved or if one of you got involved, that would be great. And advocate for, um, those services. I guess two things, av- three things, advocate for those services. No more to be peeled off, no more. Like, keep the county contracts intact. Two, bring those back in. And if they can't be brought in, then, um, you have, they have to do a contract with the provider per county, not one contract. There's three entities that are in the same boat. So there's CCS, there's Best Care that does Jefferson and Crook, and then, um, Hood, Wasco, and Sherman.
The thing, uh, thing that I'm hearing is you're saying the end game of Dave's day.
That's my.
Yeah, that's sounds like. True, true, true.
I think the state gets frustrated with the counties as the local mental health authority that, and I think that they would like to just get, I I think that was evidenced by the governor walking out of the meeting.
Well, I mean, it shows you more to turn over sales with less responsibility. Just, my, you've done a heck of a job here. You're really, and your other accounts. What's the, is the consensus is they're kind of a a consensus with other counties of certain sizes or all the counties that they wanna, they don't wanna see this happen?
I don't know at the commissioner level. Um, but at the CMHP level, they don't want any further erosion of that contract. They want the counties to remain the local mental health authority. They believe in local control. Um, yeah.
And you, you know Gina pretty good. What is, she's on top of this? I hope.
She's for, I I haven't talked with her as much about these, the smaller issue around the CMHPs that are contracting with multiple counties. So I'm glad you mentioned this because I can give her a call after we meet today. She's absolutely on top of this contract. The IGA or the CFAA, uh, revisions around the withholding of funds. I think so. Um, did it, did it come up at county college this week?
It wasn't a presentation, but it is something that I asked her directly about, about the CH or CMHP, uh, contract. And she says, it's underway, the extensions for six months. She was aware of it. Uh, but this was the first I'd heard that they're looking to peel off those, those are the two services. So.
Yeah, more than two, but those are the ones that are most easily recognizable as the school-based and gambling.
Give any good news?
Uh, the good news is that legislatively at the Oregon level, um, we didn't receive any cuts. I say that, um, knowing that some agencies did receive cuts, and I feel bad about that. Um, at least selfishly, our services are intact at this point. Um, and that's good news. We've been able to fill some positions that had been vacant for a while, so that's also very good news for us. Um, and what I wanted to end on is the kids program enforcement. It's complete. Um, we hired an administrator. Again, this is a thirteen-bed program that provides subacute and psychiatric residential treatment services to children that are twelve and under. It's, um, it's amazing. It's a great, it's a great building. It's gonna be a great program. I'd love to give you a tour. I've mentioned that before. So hopeful that, um, I, you know, that my phone might ring or I might get an email from one of you or all three of you or whatever, uh, asking to see it. Um, I I think if I were you, and this is, I hope it's okay to say it like this, um, it's something to be really proud of in Moro County and you guys are, um, whether you know it or not, kind of leading the way for care uh, and how it gets delivered in Oregon and the value they place on it for those that are, um, I think most vulnerable and at risk. And you're helping out emergency rooms tremendously. That's where these kiddos stay and it's terrible. So love to show you the building.
Elchip, we're gonna go have a tour of it next time we meet, right?
I think you are. I think the Elchip is on the schedule, yeah.
So. Cool.
That's good news.
Thanks for having me, Stacey.
Yeah. That's it. I know I bring a bunch of handouts. I completely so sorry. I was at a board meeting on Friday and, um, just overestimated my memory.
Beautiful. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
There's anything we can do.
I will, uh, keep you posted about that last issue that we discussed. Thanks.
Next, uh, uh, third reports just finished. Fourth report.
Yeah, um, just a few comments. We had our own legislative updates. Not too much on the criminal aspect side, I would say, went through. Um, there are at least two damaging big changes or anything else I could think of. Now, one of the bills, more of the effect here, or Yumitola Counties, was the bill starting to add another court judge. Uh, Senate Bill ninety-five, that was me for the judicial district reminder. We share our judges with Yumitola Counties, so it's more Yumitola Counties, your court judges. Currently, five been five forever. Really, it's five since there was a district court, the former court system, used to be a justice court, district court, and then circuit courts. Used to be district court, that was by Judge Wallace, I believe, looking at Hermiston for, gosh, prior to that, I became dis return, I mean, prior to becoming a, two thousand and seven. At around, forgot what year it transitioned, the district courts went away, basically consolidated with the circuit courts. That's how the fifth judge came into our judicial district. So background reason, even though we all know the population's been growing, law enforcement officers have been doubling or tripling, it seems like the number of judges has stayed the same. So this bill was put in, not by any bigger county, but by the judicial department. So Oregon Judicial Department made this as a bill to add judges, not just to ours, but two or three other judicial districts too. Uh, that went through, uh, passed through official first committee. But near the end of the session, when it finally got brought back up, two judges were removed from the bill, one and both, and I think one was Crook or another rural county, and then ours. So two spots were removed. Which disappointing the fact that it's like, is kind of specific for rural counties, also conservative counties. And so seeing that removed was kind of a disappointment. Um, we're gonna see if there's any way it could be added back on, but it didn't happen. So the bill passed, uh, with the judge like in Lanning County. Watching a few other counties who had to add any positions, but not the Moro and the other, Moro Yumitola and the other, uh, rural county, forgotten which county it was. So that's the, um, kind of disappointments. It looks like this going well, but we'll see what happens. That's my point. There was, it wasn't as, wasn't much discussion on the fiscal aspect. I can definitely understand, you know, that there's a fiscal saying, hey, we don't have this much. You choose your priority. It just kind of came out of nowhere. So that was kind of an odd situation. Um, the other thing for the DA office, we had pretty good theft case, good work from the Moro County Sheriff's Office, also more PD. I like to bring this case up because it kind of shows the value being in a rural spot, but also smaller agencies that work together. And so this case started out with a Ernest Erickson, Lawrence Parent, Chester Paradiso. Three defendants I know quite well, had a long history of property crimes in the area. Um, all of a sudden, were located by a business owner, uh, out. He had a pump, pump shop, was repaired, equipment out there. And he had been tired of people stealing from him in the past, not getting caught, you know, so he actually just bought some cheap cameras, set them up out. And he had been tired of people stealing from him in the past, not getting caught, you know, so he actually just bought some cheap cameras, set them up out there. And all of a sudden, frequently after he gets set up, he gets a ring on his phone, just the motion detection. He's able to watch live on his cell phone, saying, oh, there's somebody at the, at the property right now. And it gets you hear the voices. So, so he starts heading out that way. Um able to finally locate them, I believe at Love's Truck Stop, they didn't leave and start driving away. I think it was Chloe Neubert from the Moro County Sheriff's Office who kind of thought, well, this sounds kind of familiar, like some boys I know, so let me go by their place. Goes by car, starts pulls out, starts eluding, basically a long elude through, went for a while. Finally got caught and funny part was, it was just a, the wire in the back of a vehicle. It wasn't like a big truck. I'm used to, you know, trucks full of wire. So this little smaller rig had the wire and locomotive in it. Okay, so they got caught, arrested on it. What was surprising about that case too is that, while you still go on, after that, see the wire gets returned back to the property owner of the business, which of course is cut wire now, and may not as useful. He gets it back, but then calls back the sheriff's office and says, hey, some of this isn't mine. You know, I know my wire, what I need, and this, some of this is a mine. At the same time, um information is shared, former PD and officer investigates a case involving wire taken from a locomotive. And that's against me, I didn't realize about trains. Well, they still might have big engines, but they just run like a generator that powers electric motors. And so it took not long, but somebody went under the trains, cut some of the electric wires underneath. That's when they tried to start the train up, the engine started, sounded good, put it in gear, nothing moved. And so um they went back, compared, verified that wire was the wire because former PD had heard about the Moro County Sheriff's Office case and hey, just touch base. They touched base, went back to that business, saw the wire, the wire, the, that's the train wire and all tied together. So that was great working together on it, the agencies, just because they talked to each other. They know, we're working the same dispatch. I mean, geez, things like this help out a lot. What's after the case was the amount of damage. And I think that's what people need to realize is these guys were, again, some of the stupidest people because of the idea, the risk they took. They took this wire, right? I know when they melt it down, they're not getting much money at all for it. Really, they're gonna melt insulation off, sell it as scrap metal, that's it. But the wire itself, they used one, the special wire from the pump company, was wire that went out into more hazardous material, water, kind of for, um I think it's part about the dairies out there where they're trying to produce energy. I forgot the exact mention, but it's meant to withstand some heavy stuff. And so just that wire that fit in the back of their rigs was over a thousand dollars worth, just so that means it costs a lot for fun. Then they damaged a motor, you know, in the train track. When that got cut out, they cut it too close to the electric motor. That motor had, they couldn't just splice into it. So they replaced all of that. We're talking tens of thousands of dollars of damage. A crane had to get brought in to lift the train up to fix it. I mean, for amount, where we're talking like less than fifty bucks or a hundred bucks worth of scrap metal they got, were tens of thousands of dollars of damage. And that's experience I've had my whole, you know, working as a prosecutor, seeing a little bit they get. The damage it causes, the landowner, the property owner, the business owner is tremendous. And so luckily uh Oregon passed and the voters passed repeat property measures in Oregon. And so it turned these crimes that would have been presumptive probation. I don't think people realize that. Most criminal cases, even felony charges in Oregon are presumptive probation, not prisoner jail sentences. That's based on a criminal history. And with a property crime, it's not considered as serious. And so generally, those are probation. But because we have the repeat property laws, each of these were sent off to prison for three or four years now each. And so they're out of our community and I'm sure problem is all these sheriff's deputies and officers be higher on investigating cases. They're gonna have a lot more free time since these three yahoos are not here anymore, it looks like. I'm sure someone else will step up to play, but this is the thing where I have cases like these guys that have a lot of convictions, like a tremendous amount of convictions. And I know that's only a small part of the crimes they've committed. Right? We're only catching some of these cases. These property crimes are almost impossible to charge. If these guys would have been pulled over, you know, for speeding or something, a day or two later had some wire in the back, probably never would have tied it all together. Just wouldn't have known. And if that, if that business owner hadn't put the cameras up to catch it, would have been caught. So the other courage I would say is, these cameras are cheap now. Um and they work, I mean, just giving a tip, the heads off, they can run on solar power, you know, type of thing. So it's worth it if you can't be your business. We had another cases here just in South County. That was North County, South County, an individual who broke into places, the same thing. They had some different cameras outside and luckily had it right outside his business. So was able to turn on and catch the person when they came on the property, went to a building. Before that, it just would have been like, well, we think it's this person, but no fingerprints, you know, the, the science is like what people think where all of a sudden you can just, oh, you touch the door handle, we can definitely solve this case. That's not how it works at all. And so these cameras make the difference. So I just encourage folks to do it. Um and so it's been busy, but I think some good results on these cases, DA office, I appreciate that. The law enforcement's worked on it, them working together. It's still been busy. We have an increase. I would say what's concerning is still drunk driving cases. Just constant, particularly in the north end of county, Boardman. I'm not sure if it's because of increase or if it's because of a strong police presence in a, in a small area. Right? And I've always talked about Boardman is, there's a few roads that just go over the highway. You're going from one part down to the other, you're going one road generally. And so if you camp out those spots, you're able to catch people. We get tons of arrests for people who can't maintain lane. Drive from the gas station when they bought more beer, heading back across towards, you know, you know, Wilson or Coonsy and all of a sudden get pulled over. So that's been a surprise, the increase on drunk driving cases, but I think it's just because of heavy patrols. So that's all I have, just for a little synopsis of cases, but.
That's the cutoff. Wow, the jumps from the miscellaneous to a felony.
Oh, for, for theft cases, thousand dollars.
Well, why don't they cost ten thousand dollars to deal with?
Criminal mischief charge separate. Um but criminal mischief doesn't have the same seriousness as theft. And so unless it's done, it's unintentionally, there's not like an aggravated criminal issue. So you can have criminal mischief felony, which can be a repeat property offense, but it's not a serious theft. There's not like a higher. And that's actually, you know, it's a very good point because the same criminal mischief of a thousand dollars would be the same as a fifty, sixty thousand dollar criminal mischief. And that doesn't seem right.
Kind of the same thing to farmers, when they start stealing fertilizer, they do more damage than.
Oh, yeah.
The other question I got from these uh solar farms, do they have wire out there, these guys, you know?
I haven't had a case yet. If they are, they must, they're probably underground or also pretty smaller ones. And so I haven't seen that as much. The ones that I know were an issue we had for a bit were some of the train tracks, wire would be taken, there's likely transmission communication wires. And then also um not the irrigation center pivot wire was always an issue. Um but I haven't seen those others, I haven't seen, I was like for the solar camps. They might be out there, but I've not, I've not had a case yet, all been met.
Okay, any questions, Justin? Alright, thank you very much. Okay, next up is our fair office with Cindy.
We do have a guest today. So uh I, I had some other things, but since this is Queen Casey, you all um have heard about her and I just wanted to start off that she has been doing a fabulous job. We could not be happier. Um of the way she presents herself and her activity level, she's doing an outstanding job. So uh doesn't need much proof, but we'll go ahead and let you uh hear what she has to say. And if you're going to the Fourth of July, uh parade in ION, she will be there. So please uh make sure to stop the ad. Say hi. So go ahead, Casey.
Good morning, guys. I just wanna start off and thank you guys for funding the Queen so I can have all these experiences and it's just great. I've had a really good time of what I've experienced so far. I've had a really busy few months. Some of the things I participated in is I went to the Miss Rodeo Oregon Queen Camp in Madras. I learned a lot. I made a bunch of friends and it, it was a really good camp. Like I, I enjoyed it a lot. I went to, my first rodeo was the Spray Rodeo. Again, it was super fun. It was really hot, but it was fun.
And I'm gonna add, she had to jump on a totally foreign horse to do that because her horse, what, two days ago?
One day, yes. I had to get my back. Unfortunately, my horse did get hurt, so, but I was lucky enough that a community member let me borrow his horse. And then I went to the Eastern Oregon Livestock Show, which was also great. I had a lot of fun. My favorite rodeo so far was my last rodeo I went to last weekend. It was the Yucaya Rodeo. I, it, it was my favorite. The running was super good and all my like queen friends were there, so it was a really good experience. I have upcoming appearances this month at the ION Fourth of July, the Elgin Stampede and the Irogan Watermelon Festival. I'm super excited for all of those. Um a few weeks back, I won the Grand Champion Horse Showman at the Moro County Four-Horse Fair. And you can watch me compete in the Round Robin at Fair for Master Showman. I continue to enjoy representing Moro County in all, all appearances. And I'm very thankful for the opportunity to travel and share information about our rodeo. Thank you again for funding me. Like I've had an amazing time. I just love everyone I'm meeting and I'm learning so much and it's just really great. Thank you.
And you know, one of the things that this position is supposed to be advertisement. And we are getting our bang for our buck. Um every place I go, I hear about it. Um, oh gosh, Casey is doing a great job. It's so good to see a queen back and um you know, the last two years I haven't heard anything other than, I don't see anything in the parades. I don't see this and um there's complete uh strangers that they hear I'm from Moro County have told me, oh, I met your queen and I was like, wonderful. That's what she's supposed to do.
So thankful for the community that's also helped me and and like when something goes wrong, like someone is just there like to help me and they're giving me so much. Like I'm getting gifts of like people that I knew, I knew, but I didn't, I wasn't close to. So it's really great.
It reminds me, I have your pen.
Speak for, for bringing back this tradition. It's very, very nice to see. And I know it'd be a lot of work. You know, you got a lot of travel and you're already much for some of it, but it's really nice to see. Yeah, that's parents will tell you. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Alright, so on the fair side, um I am happy to say that all of our judges are confirmed. That can always be a very long ordeal. Uh so contracts are out for judges and about half of them are currently back in. Uh entertainment music is set. We have a magic show, a giant bubbles, face painting, et cetera. I'm also working on a possible like little train that goes around. I'm hoping that can come in at least for a day. It looked pretty fun. Um uh of course, our new premium books came and um I gave each commissioner one and there's more outside. Um have heard nothing but great comments about it. A couple of special touches, you know, uh last year we lost uh Lynn Brer, who was an FFA advisor. And so there's a special tribute to him on the very back. So that I've also heard a lot of uh things about, try to introduce articles, a little more information. The advertising, we got a couple more, but not a lot. That is something that definitely I need to find more avenues to increase that. Um in other fair books, I have seen the advertising pays for the premium book. Um and I'd like to see more of that, just your small companies to put in an ad. And but well, that's another step for another year. So anyway, uh we also will have a Queen's Welcome Dinner instead of the Wednesday night dinner. Um we're calling it Queen's Welcome Dinner. Um we're hoping to see some commissioners there. Uh we will have more, a table for Moro County employees. Um hoping that we'll see some people there. We'll be having tri-tips thanks to um the livestock um growers. Uh they are donating that and um uh Mrs. Ray from ION will be putting that on. We'll have entertainment. Um Kale Moon is our singer backed up with Bubble Fairy will be there and some photo things and uh so really hoping that will be, oh, and then kids from the high school are going to come down and give dance lessons. So uh hoping that will be fun. Um so what?
Dance lessons be uh what high schoolers are running through TikTok or is this going to be?
No, into Western, yes, Western. Yeah, and uh it's a group of kids, well, it's kind of the same group that wanted to have the Winter Fest, they had a dance. And they were saying, oh, gosh, that was really fun. We need to teach other people. So they volunteered and they have a playlist of about seven songs that these kids are gonna come in and give dance. So we'll see how that goes. Uh so a quick update on the sheep showing. So we do have a vendor was selected. And we are hoping to see that new uh facility at the fairgrounds um in August. Um we did do uh before this a shade study to make sure we knew which direction um it would face and things like that. So um we're looking forward to that. Um their model's getting closer. We, meaning the uh chairman of our board, Shelby, and myself, Tony, Vince and uh Matt, we did meet. We felt that the remodel, um some of the funds from our one point two million did go for that materials for the sheep shed. And uh so we had to make some adjustments. I think we have felt that the majority of it can stay, but we are giving uh up the I, I don't wanna call it a vaulted ceiling, but we were going to lift the inside of that ceiling. Um so we've decided that's not a mandatory thing. It doesn't do anything other than aesthetics. It looks better and it's more modern. But um so we'll forego that. And hopefully most of the other things which are needed improvements will continue. So that's our hope. Um we also talked about future capital improvements. These will include things like um a new snack shack, which is desperately needed, uh a new wash racks, a portable stage um and leechers. Um we've also discussed some other possible projects, um improving the small animal barn, which is not easily used because of the heat um and possibly adding larger fans, ventilation and air movement. So that's a quick update on that. As far as sponsorships, we're looking good, we're equal, maybe a little bit more than last year. I did um implement a new way to donate this year. Um well, we started it last year, but I was amazed this year I had four more. It's called a room sponsorship, so they can like sponsor the snack shack or they can sponsor my office or whatever. Um I know we had um a queen, somebody who wanted to support the queen, so we put them as a sponsorship for our office. That's not a bad central area. But uh anyway, that boomed and I'm gonna have to start making up rooms because I think we've got uh that was a, I think, a nice niche. Um and a way for businesses to come in and feel like they're contributing without you know, really hitting their pocketbook. So that was good. Um we have, oh. Livestock uh is pretty much all entered other than open class. So so far we are at fifty meat goats, that's up from last year, seventy-six sheep, that's up from last year. Ninety-seven swine, I think that's equal to within two or three, fifty-five beef, that's up. And ten heifers and sixteen dairy. I think the dairy is about the same. It might be up a little bit. So um I think we can fit them all in there. And the, the livestock, our extension agents did say as long as we don't get a whole bunch of open class and I'm, I'm not sorry to say, but my complete phone calls have been about open class livestock so far. So I'm not sure. And the closing date is July at fifteenth for that. So we are getting a lot of calls about entering open class livestock. Um cleanup day is scheduled for August second. Um working with extension to make this flow, Lamb Weston, again, is coming in to bring their fry truck and help with feeding the kids. Um Tillamook is bringing, um we're not having uh ice cream social this year. I think I brought this up to you guys before, but they were a little concerned. They've always donated all the ice cream for our ice cream social. And they were a little concerned, you know, how And they were a little concerned, you know, half hour in when it's a hundred degrees, the product. Isn't at its best and they're concerned about that. So they started something last year or the year before where they actually have an ice cream truck. And then they also have a grilled cheese trailer. Um, and so what they do is they bring in FFA kids. They train them to handle food and um kind of interact with people. So give them a little work experience. Uh, they put it in there. They do charge for the ice cream and the grilled cheese, but all proceeds go back to that FFA and the youth. So it's a great win-win uh program. They're coming for two days up there. So we're really looking forward to that. Um. Fair entry is up and running. Did have a little glitch with the livestock, but um I think I have that fixed. Um, people can begin entering. I checked it yesterday and we already have nine pages of it. So that's way up from last year. We're looking forward to increased entries. Um. And I have lots of campers finally coming in. Uh, we're about half full now and I'm sure it will fill up quickly. Um, so that's pretty much where we are. My next, I'm working on more vendors, food vendors. Um, and confirming contracts and things like that. This month, so any questions?
This will be your last report?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure if that, I haven't checked with Valerie this week, if the job has been posted yet. We were really hoping to see someone in so I could show them the ropes. Um, but I don't know if that job has been posted yet, so.
Well, I hope you find a hired person like you.
It, it does. Thank you, thank you.
You can do it.
You, you need passion for it, that's for sure. Thank you.
And yes, the position has been.
Oh, good, good. Nice.
Thanks to both of you.
Thank you. Alright, thanks. Alright.
Okay, next up is a public wish monthly report of very, very excited.
Okay. So would you like to present or just take the written? Yeah, I can. I go to, we'll go to written uh report. They were here for actually some later items. Uh, so, but if there's any questions from the, from the commission on the report, I'm sure we'll read uh Corrie can. The Ori through, through the response.
I, I've got a question for if he, if I'm coming to the podium.
Yeah.
So uh, I have had uh some constituents ask me uh. What our policy is on noxious weeds and if someone has a neighbor with a field full of. Say random weed like Scotch thistle.
Yeah.
It's near a highway. What is our process for how we deal with that?
That, that's a great question. So uh, the process is. Talk to them about getting it done. Um, if no action, if nothing looks like it's been done, it's a written warning. Notification twenty days. Uh, you need to take care of this in twenty days. Uh, after that, um, it goes with the planning department and in code enforcement. So what's been happening is uh the last few years, um, I have been submitting. Written twenty day notices and some progress has been made. Um, but. What's happening is the whole loop of, of the whole process has not been. Has not been in place to fully. Uh, enforce this and um. This year I've sent out two, I've got with, or excuse me, I've sent out three. I've got with planning department and two of those, um, so out of the three, two of them have come into compliance. And made a huge, huge, um, yeah, difference on taking care of those. One is still in progress. Uh, I did see sprayer tracks out there, so it, it's getting taken care of. But the trouble is. And, and I will take responsibility for this. It's been so busy in this department. It's just been concentrating on. Weed contract and weed spraying and it's been hard to, next to impossible to make the whole loop, to stay on top of everything. And um, and so now tho- those people, those, those. Um, let's say landowners with the issues, they, they've, it's gotten to a point now where it's, it's, it's. It's gonna be thirty five hundred to forty two hundred dollars if the county steps in and takes care of it. If they don't. Do that in that twenty days and they got a thirty and then a sixty and then the county goes in. So. Um, unfortunately, it's put those people um that have that problem in a, in a. Poor situation where the county might have, they might get a bill for forty two, forty five hundred dollars and um. And then it goes to lean on the property if they don't pay it or get it taken care of. So, um. Yeah, the being kind of stretched thin is really hurt in, in both ways. Neighbors. Um, for, for weed control and spreading out and the, the noxious weeds getting away. Um, and two on the landlords themselves because they haven't gone through the due process and they've. Made little attempts, but not major attempts. So um, they've gotten behind and the county hasn't kept them in check on that. Uh, and I uh, I'm fully uh aw- aware of that situation and what's, what's. What's um, what's happened out there and, and um, I was glad to see two out of the three. Um, had taken care of it. And there's another aspect of it, like the weed department, um, or the weed district is supposed to also. Uh. Come up with a full plan for that person and how to take care of it, recommendations and a whole, and it just, it can't get done. There's no way.
You, you need to do more than just show up and say, get rid of these?
It, yes, yes, yes. Yeah. So uh, that is a great question. It's a great concern. It, it's a great problem too. Um, fortunately. Uh, the one that hasn't been in compliance, um, I've been watching the neighbors, talking to the neighbors. It hasn't spread outside. Um, their, their place, but it's on a highway and everybody sees it and that's an issue too. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. And, and that's a very good question and, and that's. Uh, matter of factly speaking, that is state we're in right now and uh, we, we are trying to hire someone and a candidate. That'll be for you too, but um, that does, this has been building up for three years. So it, it's coming to a significant point. Yeah, yeah, to get, to get this in line about, yeah, so I hope that is a clear.
Well, I appreciate your honesty on that and that I can relate to that.
Yes, please, yeah, please do, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for.
This is for Rory, just as a FYI, the stop sign at the corner, West Eighth and here again at Highway seven thirty. Someone ran, so explain on that.
Oh, morning.
Um, yesterday.
Alright, well, thank you.
The administrator report, we've uh issued a written report showing some of the activities over the last two weeks. Uh, a couple of items uh noted, Kimberly, uh. Uh, Lindsay gave us the updates on the CMHP item. And we have talked with AOC and we will be uh keeping an eye out for the event, uh, amendment to the IGA. Uh, that should be coming forth. She has assured us that they have assurances of money coming, that it's not gonna fall through. Uh, but we are keeping an eye on that, making sure that's taken care of. Uh, one thing, uh, we wanted to confirm, uh, we've thrown out a couple of dates. For the strategic plan, uh, strategic retreat to review the report and make some final determinations on that with VOC. Uh, we're proposing the dates of July twenty first and twenty second. And wanted to make sure that was uh still okay with you. And if so, we will get those posted and uh make arrangements for citing and. State. So, um, those are good. Yes, no, we'll run with it. Uh, that's Monday and Tuesday. Um. So other items, we have the curse retirement transition. We've worked out details uh for all employees on the transition. We're going well on that. Uh, compensation study, uh, uh, we are, uh. I'm taking that over for Lindsay. We'll be working with Mindy on this. And uh, as the compensation study pulls forward, you'll likely see some reports, uh, first part of August. Uh, to review, we'll have a work session, work through it. I know last time the, the compensation study kind of. Uh, got the report without all the discussions. We don't, we want to make sure we have a thorough discussion with, uh, with you before any, uh. Any changes are proposed or just reviewed uh by the VOC. Um. Other things, uh, we are working with the fairground improvements. There's uh, uh. A little hiccup on the sheep uh showing uh shelter, um. That we, uh, we were planning to meet with the, with the contractor on, uh. And review, there's just a, a bit of a question on the approach that they're taking. Uh, the other one is just on, on record, uh. And the fifty five thirty one uh for lottery bonds passed. Uh, which included two point eight five million dollars for water infrastructure and expansion for areas impacted by the water nitrate. Levels of La Guama. Uh, we have specifically been targeting Westland area. Um, however, we are still continuing with uh meetings with the community, work out details. And uh, we're excited about that, uh, that support of the state legislature. Uh, state agencies in considering that two point eight five million dollars, that'll be coordinated through the clean water consortium. Uh, so we'll have to make arrangements first and uh pass through kind of uh funding on that. Uh, that's a huge step. Uh, our first, the community meeting was held June eighteenth after our previous uh. Commission meeting and we had a good uh starting participation level, I would say. We, we want more people, but it was, it was a good start and it's good discussion. And we challenged all the residents to come back and, and bring more people out to the one that will happen in August. We don't have that scheduled yet. Uh, but fortunately, one of the things as we've done, talking this funding and these other items. We could come in with even a, a more developed plan for them. Uh, to let them see what the realities of, of the solutions are for those areas. Uh.
Maybe I missed it, of course I wasn't. Was that probably meeting that specifically for the Westland area or was that kind of a whole? Irrigan uh, or then?
This, that meeting on the eighteen was specifically for Westland. We wanted to engage with those. Yeah. Um, there was a meeting the next week that was for the La Guama uh. Uh, roadmap project and that was open to everybody. It was held in the city of Umatilla, so.
Right, yeah, I remember seeing that, but I was.
Yeah, we want to engage with them specifically since we have uh this project in mind. And we want to work through the details with the, with the impacted landowners. Other people are free to uh attend, uh, but we're specific. Um, we do have the transition with uh, uh, with our uh human resource director stepping down. Uh, we wish her the best and she's done a lot of good work for us. Uh, we do have a couple candidates for that position and the HR assistant. That we will likely start interviewing uh next week to see if any of those match our needs. And uh, we'll be working that direction. So. Any uh, any questions from the board on any those or items? I would just ask if there's any preference on location of the retreat as well. Uh, we've had a couple of meetings down here in, in this. They won't be, I mean, it's a public meeting, but um. Uh, just to see if there's any preference of having it north or south, uh. Or if just where, whatever we can secure.
I don't have any preferences.
Okay, alright. We will, we will make arrangements then. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, thanks.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented, second.
In second, further discussion, all in favor? County issued credit card request. Kevin's not here, but I guess Matt.
Yes, he's out on vacation. We have a uh county credit card uh request and per policy, this needs to go before the board of commissioners for. Uh, smittle. Uh, what we are requesting for is a credit, a county credit card to issue to Valerie Ballard. Executive uh assistant to the board and the county administrator. There's times when she needs to secure items for meetings. Secure large lodging expenses. This body and myself, and it would definitely actually be very advisable, her policy that she's using her own card. Not borrowing one of ours uh to do that. And so we, we're asking her, the, her VOC's permission. To issue a county credit card to Valerie.
I think it's a good idea.
I move to approve issuing a county credit card to the Board of Commissioners Executive Assistant Valerie Ballard, second.
Need a second for the discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. The resource director working on classification.
Yes. Um, according to policy, when employees are uh considered to be working out class. Uh, they should be assigned to uh, particularly if they're to perform the duties of department heads' jobs. That there is a uh, an adjustment for their pay scale during that time when they are. Uh, providing those inner duties. Uh, Mindy Wilson is being asked to take on some of those HR duties. Uh, while uh, we're looking for a new HR director. Uh, and I'll be assisting on those. The policy says that the uh, the base rate needs to be um. Uh, the entry level for the higher level position or for, if that's not higher than. The current position, five percent higher than the employee's regular base rate of pay. Um, and so with that, and uh, the policy shows that we need to bring that before the board of commission. Uh, we are requesting for the adjustment uh that Mindy would receive step one of the HR director grade. Uh, which uh currently results in a seven dollars and forty cent per hour increase. Uh, we anticipate that this will uh, uh, this will be effective today. Uh, this was the first day that Lindsay's out and will continue until we have secured a new HR director. There might be a little bit of overlap for just training and as she continues to do that, but I would foresee that would be less than two weeks after we. Uh, so with that, we would ask for approval for uh out of class pay to Mindy Wilson.
I guess my, my only question is, uh, when does it come off? So you said you anticipate two weeks afterwards. Is it something that we would have to vote on again or?
No, we would, uh, I would actually just in- inform you that it had, uh. We, we rescinded that out of class pay. It was secure. So we can make sure we went to that.
We've got a suggested motion here.
I move to his and make Mindy Wilson to work out of class due to the recent resignation of the HR director. Be compensated a step on a grade thirty for the duration of the in our assignment, uh, there's July sixth, twenty twenty five. My second.
And then the second and further discussion. All in favor? Next up is the second meeting. Twenty five, there's two and adoption, five, five, and thirty, and she does. One, five, five, twenty five, ECM, six, twenty five, ECM, one, fifty seven, twenty five. ECM, one, fifty eight, twenty five.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. For the record, Tamara Mabbett, planning director, this item is um really a placeholder for you today, um, the statue. Um, and our, we, we fall back to the basic rules. Um and our, we we fall back to the basic rules, um we have a second reading of an ordinance. The weeks after the orig- original reading for the um for land use decisions the board approved two weeks ago. I was out for a bit and um the attorney for the applicant was out for a bit, so we just wanted to postpone it for two weeks. And then we'll have the final product, including any edits that needed to be made. So um it does not have to be an advertised public hearing, that final decision just has to be made in a public meeting. So. I don't really think you need action, but it's to memorialize the fact that it'll it will come before you in two weeks. It is because we're not home rule and we have to have the second.
State law seem more rule, the county rules did the county pause the state rule.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
Is that what we're doing?
And yes, the the requirement is that you have uh the public hearing set for in in two weeks after that time. And since we said that. Should have that unless we continue that since the since the item's not ready and the applicant is.
Or do it where this is within our power, if it's a state statute or something, it's within the county conditions power. To override that.
It just got to be any sooner than two weeks, so.
Okay, so what is, I apologize, I reach the looking over at Tamara sometimes, the land use council Kerns, some works on these, so he's reviewed it. Couple with that aspect on it.
Yeah.
Um so I guess that's can't be sooner than two weeks is the idea too, so it can be a little bit later, but. I wish I'd, I wish I was assured more on it, but usually land use council currents handles those more than Paul process. So if he's has an issue with it, then that should be fine. I wish, I don't know exactly, since I have, I'll review these ones. I know, I apologize, that's.
I just don't want it to come back and find us, if somebody was against this, says, okay, you guys messed up the process here.
Yeah, no, I understand, I can better see the concerns too, because it's like, it's the um. Yeah, this is the board thing, well, falls back on us, we're deciding. You don't want to be led astray on or do something wrong. I believe we're okay with it. Tamara, any one comments on it?
Yeah, and in section eight point zero six zero, which is the chapter in our zoning ordinance governing amendments to. Any amendments, the decision of the county board of commissioners will be final unless appealed. Um eligibility eligibility to appeal is governed by Oregon revised statute and Oregon administrative rule. Uh so uh Dan's advice was um and in consultation with the applicant's counsel, we both needed some more time. To to prepare and edit a final document, we were not allowed to have it sooner than today, but it's fully within our power to defer that. And that final decision is in a public meeting, not a public hearing, so the original. Decision of the board was in a formal land use hearing, it's just the second reading has to be in a public meeting. And it's not today, and I thought for transparency purposes, rather than just not put anything on the board agenda. Uh other people who might be watching this would anticipate that today might normally be the day to have that second reading. So we put it on there really to memorialize the fact, it's going to happen, just not today, but in two weeks. So I don't even think the board needs to take any action, we're just memorializing it.
Yeah, I think more just public information, I guess that makes sense, okay, that aspect to say more open aspect on a saying, and I appreciate definitely the idea of saying. You have Mr. Kerns, the council, but also council for the applicant, who might primarily have the first concern saying, hey. Usually it's the applicants that have the first kind of thing, you know, the county's slowing things down, now this is approved, why is this dragging? You know, I have a claim here because the county's going too slow, it hurts my business, but the position is that that was also in favor. And local the county, so the two parties there.
Agreed.
So I think I don't have an issue with that, and I appreciate the fact that more explaining what happened versus just continuing it and then probably getting a phone call or something from somebody else. Why I'm against it, saying, hey, I want to appeal this, why wasn't this on the agenda, so I could have known that got approved and.
That's right, yes.
Okay, but we don't really need to back this motion.
New questions before she takes off there, Chris, it would be safest for us to do that, because, to be honest, I don't remember when. We did the first reading, if there wasn't something that said that we would again address this on this thing.
I I don't, we have a set date and time for the next, or we are gonna have it?
Uh well, we don't, I mean, again, we don't have to advertise it, it is um.
I don't, I'm just saying how abundant is the caution. Do you want to make a, so I will move to continue this land use action until July sixteen twenty twenty five. The Board of Commissioners meeting in there again. I second that motion.
Thank you. All right, there are not my last business items since.
Before we continue, I would just like to declare that I have potential conflict of interest, I talked to the Oregon Ethics Commission, it's. Highly unlikely, but there's a scenario where if this drought uh declaration went into effect and the governor declared it. And then the Oregon Department of Agriculture decided to have potential like emergency grant funding that I could be eligible for that. Um that requires multiple steps beyond us, but I just wanted to make sure that I had that out in public, that I have a potential conflict of interest on this.
No, in a situation like that, does he still sign the declaration of the?
Because it's a potential.
Okay.
Well, I thought maybe um, I know, I can talk, if it's all right, man. This was one that came up, I think there was. Individuals who reached out and asked landlords, I'm not sure which one in this case, that's not drought declaration, something we've done. Ask, I'm not sure what difference it makes sometimes at the end, but we filed these for, because we live in a desert. And so that was one of the ones we had filed and we reached out and landlord asked, are we looking to do this again, you know? Good, out there for. Monsters, and so we reached out, as we've done in the past, to Kevin Payne, who was the Soil and Water Conservation District, I don't think he's on. Making sure, he did submit a more recent letter dated July first, I'll just read this. Kind of his position on it, the letter had. Uh the moral, the moral soil water conservation district wishes to formally support the emergency declaration of drought in Royal County, Oregon. The following points are basis for declaration, as are the attached documents. Approximately thirty-five percent of rural counties currently under a D one designation drought, which is a moderate drought. And the rest of the county is D zero drought, which is then normally dry. Uh six sixty-five percent normal, according to U S drought monitor as of June twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. National Oceanic Oceanic Atmospheric Administration, NOAA seasonal temperature outlook from Royal County forecasts a fifteen to sixty percent probability that temperatures will be above normal. That's valid through uh July to August of two thousand twenty-five, that was issued on June nineteenth. The National Oceanic Estu- 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 Administration NOAA seasonal participation outlook from Royal County forecast thirty-three to forty percent probability that participation will be below normal. Then also NOAA seasonal drought outlook for July first to September thirtieth predicts that all of Royal County will give one in a one of two categories here. Drought development likely or drought persists, and he has documentation more showing. The um their basis of it, so just in the past, what we've done is when there's been drought declaration, we will. As um farm landlords will come to the county normally say, hey, it's benefits we need to draft declaration, we know the county itself. Are not experts in it, and we can look at something and say, it looks dry, we don't know, that's why we work with the uh soil water conservation. Looks good, yeah, we put in the map, it looks dry, you know? If you put it in a graph format, you can get bamboozled a lot of these. But no, that's where we reach out to the uh Soil Water Conservation District, they have these updates with NOAA. They look not just at current status, but trying to get the longer term basis. And there's probably been times before where you've reached out and maybe the information hasn't been there, it's like, well, maybe it will be, but we don't have enough evidence right now. And so as we're usually wait for that verification from, you know, local agency here, Mr. Payne has been good to work with in the past. And that's where he has him in that letter in support of it, so instead of just going with the landlords, saying, hey, it's dry. Try to get some more backup, because these go to the states, right, the governor has to approve something simply. And so we try to back their support, so that's what our current um resolution has. One note, trying to think, I want to look through a real quick. But we'll pack it, because I know that most recent letter came in. No, I think that's fine, and what we'll do is we probably include that. We have a draft letter to the state, was that? It's not included in there.
I, it is.
Is this, okay.
Yes.
And so, Chris, basically, all I'm, all I'm looking at right now is to see, since that letter that the Soil and Water Conservation District submitted was yesterday. Seeing if anything particularly changed, we had the initial one they had sent, not sure. So that's kind of the background of it, um I would say, this is still, you know, the conditions are there, we've had it more severe, we've also done it at different times. It hasn't been a constant time saying, oh, we do this in July, I, we've done some in April, we've done it in September. Uh after a certain season, so it varies quite a bit, just seems when people start being concerned.
I mean, I I personally started getting phone calls uh in the beginning. Um particularly with the folks in the north end of the county who weren't concerned, uh so this. Uh does not surprise me that we're at this point.
Any questions, I I apologize, we don't have Mr. Payne here, um.
Is online if you have any questions.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, well, we can just ask, Kevin, did you have any comments you want to make beyond the the letter that you submitted to us? I think you moved, there you are, okay. Did you, did you hear what I said?
Hey Kevin, your your mics uh kind of sounded muffled, we're not quite understanding what you're saying.
It's like a weird echo.
Okay, so, well, thanks anyway, Kevin.
But the letter was very helpful, we appreciate that.
Okay, uh that was just a motion.
So I'll move to approve resolution two zero two five dash zero eight, every resolution to plan a state of Charlie emergency.
My second.
Move for second, man, any further discussion? Okay, Commissioner reports. The link's on you.
Just say that I officially graduated from county college along with uh Matt Jensen and Valerie Ballard, so uh we're we're all, we're ready now. We have diploma, well, we're gonna get our diplomas, so clearly we're ready. I appreciate the opportunity and support of the board for that training, it was really helpful, so thank you for that.
Anything else? Well, we're going to go on executive session, actually two of them, come on.
Yes.
So what kind of board permission is now the executive session? Second session continues with the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or agent. And at the same time, we need an executive session of the O R S one to two this. Executive session, election liberation, person's business, by the governing body, negotiated real private transactions. Representatives of the news media, the staff should be allowed to test. All the members of the audience are asked to leave the room, representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclaiming anything. About these subjects during the executive session, except the state of general object of the section of privacy announced. No decision made in the executive session, at the end of the executive session, we refer to open session, off of the audience. So we will do that, but I'm. There won't be any potential accident. Okay, when we do come back into open session, for those of you. Uh the public uh potential decision or action item as a result of the accession is possible.
Um also, uh Chair, just to note, it looks like we do have a member press on Zoom, but we will not have anybody attending via Zoom. So we will be uh shutting that down. So just let them know.
So you're shutting up the press while you're sitting? No, I mean, I want to make sure.
Yes, because we have no other person participating via Zoom.
We're we're allowing, we are doing the same attendance as we do for, so if we offer Zoom for an executive session, if we have a guest or somebody else. Then our policy, I think the law is that we allow it for everyone, that it's equal opportunity for everyone to attend, we have no one attending an executive session or participating via Zoom. Like of staff or party involved, then we don't usually do Zoom, it's a present screen the same way, this is what we did. Uh it's not, it's not a policy we adopted, it is more just, we went by a legal basis, if the county wished to do more. Uh not more, but like.
It's not our policy to do what we just said.
It's actually the law, generally, and so we we've always, the law is that says that we have the base level to law, so it's not a policy, but we don't. A policy would go beyond what the statute requires, if we have a policy that we're to provide. Zoom for all executive sessions, notwithstanding the fact whether we have attendance or not, or participating party, that'd be granting, I guess, greater. At participation, and we could do that through a policy allowing more, but the baseline, the law requires. Saying, well, if we have Zoom, then we need to allow this must to also attend, that would be, so I guess we're, we don't have a policy, but to be outside with the baseline of laws. Could create a policy or the board could just say, yep, no, we want to keep Zoom going, and you guys could do that. It's it's a factor is different.
Shorten that on for you. Okay, it is not county policy, but we are still doing.
Correct, because there's a lot of things that county, county does not have policies except for things that are generally outside history bases. There is legal basis that talked about court during COVID time that talked about the Zoom participation, before what it used to be is that. We would not allow. Back several years ago, the issue was with Zoom, we would allow, or other counties, it wasn't rural counties, it was other counties when this came up. Allow participation of, let's say, parties via Zoom, like, we would say, oh, you know, Commissioner so-and-so is is not here, he's attending via Zoom, so, oh, we have an executive session. Will allow the commissioner to appear via Zoom for that, and the past used to be that, well, press can be present, but we're gonna make them appear in person. They came back with the, the risk decision was, well, no, have to review legally, they decide. No, you can't have where you have a commissioner or a party attending the Zoom executive session, but that's okay, and then you block out the press. Because if you have the Zoom available, there's not a basis to not allow the press to also appear. You know, if you're allowing that not just to be in person, but also Zoom, that's where the press needs to arrive, there's not a requirement to hold executive sessions in Zoom. And that's where that, my policy of the law came, if you do offer Zoom. Then uh for an executive session, for any party or anybody, the press have to be allowed. It takes me a long time, I apologize.
I I I understand, thank you very much for that. Okay, so we have to find a break.
And.
We're back in open session. We're recording, we are recording. Sessions back in.
So I'm moved to approve parent of patrol sergeant at grade twenty-six seventy.
My second.
And a second and further discussion. All in favor? Motion carried.
So then I will make a motion to approve hiring a recontrol applicator, grade fourteen up to step thirteen. My second.
Then give the second and further discussion, all in favor? Okay. Let's see official name on that. I don't have the, that's a work session. Or somebody.
It's a work session to review amendment of the land use code. Pursuant to adjustments the state has made.
I read all the stuff, official things. Okay.